Our July regular board meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Law?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Here, Mrs. Booton, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the common people, to our citizens, our nation, our empire, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Does anyone have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
I'd like to move 11 to action items, 11 on the consent agenda.
Okay.
To action items. Or discussion.
Or, well, action.
Yeah, that's right.
It would need to be action. Are there any other items? Any other adjustments to the agenda?
Chris, I just want to note that I would like to move the closed session discussion of the media challenge to open session, but then I just learned that we wouldn't have distributed the appropriate paperwork.
Well, I don't know, we'd have to, if we were to move that to open session, would we have to make paperwork available to have for a discussion or?
No, you don't have to, but I guess what I, that's going to be up to the board. I would still recommend to the board that you adjourn to closed session as planned. Whatever discussion you want to have when you come out of closed session is entirely up to you. There's nothing, it is on, I just want to, want to call your attention, the fact that it is an action item coming out of closed session. So you will be taking any action in open session, it's an open session item, you can discuss it however you want to discuss it when you come out.
So I can ask that question of the board members if that's what you're asking, or are you comfortable with the discussion to be after we come out?
I guess you can ask, I prefer for it to be open, but I'm comfortable both ways.
Okay, so do I have to ask for a motion to take a vote?
We have a discussion.
Can we just discuss it?
There's no motion unless there is a second to adjust that agenda item.
Okay, is there a second to Mrs. Blatner to open it? Okay, then it's going to stay enclosed, and we can come back out and have as much discussion as we want prior to the, prior to the vote.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay. My report, I've only got a few, a few things. Just a reminder, board members, we did have our self-evaluation since the last board meeting. In our self-evaluation, one of the things that we wanted to highlight was with the community, since we have a new board member that will be appointed to the board in August, we have an election coming up next April, kind of better to explain to the community kind of the role of the board. I will try to weave into my comments prior at each meeting, maybe a little bit of something about, about the board, but also, you know, as we share committee reports or anything else that you do and your role that pertains to the agenda at the meeting, you know, please feel free to take a minute, highlight community, you know, this is, you know, something that we do with that, and you know, just so that we can, you know, try to, try to do a better job in terms of educating the community on the role of the board. The board governance application, Brad is working on a kind of a cumulative piece, since he is our longest reigning board member. Rob and I have also been working on pieces in, Diana has been fantastic in terms of pulling, pulling our documentation, so that will be submitted at the end of the month. The new board member, we received 14 applications, we'll be conducting interviews with every applicant early August, and the board will vote that board member in at our August regular meeting. Adopted schools and committee assignments, this will come to the board at the August meeting. And that's all I have. Dr. Schuler?
Just a couple of quick updates for the board under my report this, this evening. So we are in the middle of summer construction season, just as a reminder, we've got about $8 million in capital improvement projects that are underway. Dr. O'Keefe has kept me informed on the progress of work. I put that work into a couple of buckets, so we have two major mechanical HVAC upgrade projects, one at Sandberg, one at Wheaton-Warrenville South, both are progressing nicely on time. We don't envision any concern with that work getting completed. Two major flooring projects, one at Lowell, Lowell, where's Dr. O'Keefe? Sorry.
Washington and Hawthorne.
Sorry, Washington and Hawthorne. So both flooring projects are doing well, no, no concern there. The two playground projects at Johnson and at Lincoln, both progressing nicely. In fact, equipment installed or in progress, and they're on to surfacing here very soon, especially at, at Lincoln, so that's going well. Lincoln, a lot of tuck pointing work around Lincoln outside of the building, also progressing nicely. Foods Lab at Wheaton-Warrenville South is getting an upgrade, and again, is, is progressing as planned. Really, the only project that had a little pause at the beginning of the summer is the paving work at Wheaton-Warrenville South. That was nothing in the, the planning, but there was an issue in the supply chain of getting asphalt that put a little pause on that project, but it is now underway, they've gotten that resolved, and, and it is fully anticipated that that work will, will happen as planned. So again, I appreciate both Dr. O'Keefe and our facilities team that continue to oversee that work. It's a really tight summer construction window for that much work, but they're doing a great job. Also wanted to mention that there's a written report on your agenda this evening that is just an update on our federal relief dollars, so is the board. We'll remember, we shared several times at board meetings, how that money was being allocated, what it was being used for, and as we came to the end of this fiscal year, Mrs. Murphy put together an update, there are a few minor adjustments that we needed to make in the, in the grants, and so we're, we're sharing that with the board. There really isn't anything major in terms of how the money is being used, but just specifically how the, the dollars have been allocated, and so we wanted to make sure that both the, the board is aware of that, and that that document is out there very publicly for anybody that has a question on, on how those dollars are supporting learning acceleration, CL, any of the, some of the capital work that we're doing across the districts. So just wanted to share that. And then last thing that I'll mention is that Dr. Kyle and human resource team are hard at work through the summer, working to get all of our, our buildings staffed. We do still have open positions that we're, we're seeking to, to fill, especially in the classified area, so instructional assistants positions, some of our supervisory positions, so I just wanted to mention that publicly, and I encourage folks to apply so we can get those buildings fully staffed by the start of the school year. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Next up is public comment. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board members are available, board meetings are available for viewing via the live stream channel on our district's YouTube channel. We do have public comment. As with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comment does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak may be shortened, we will not need to do that tonight, you have three minutes. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name, whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We do have a new timing system, Mr. Hanlon will be putting up the, the clock, it counts down, so you can see as you're reading, and we will, when you hear the buzzer, we will stop, we need you to stop your public comments. Please be ref, please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. So the first person is Patty Cross.
Good evening, my name is Patty Cross, I'm a resident of Wheaton, and I have two kids at South. So this evening I wanted to speak regarding the book Gender Queer in the high schools in the district. The first thing that I wanted to state is, the book is listed on Amazon for audiences 18 and older. So right there, that should disqualify the book as being part of our media centers in our district, or the, available to minors. Another point is that this material in the book is sexually explicit. So if anyone in this room were to print the graphics from that book, and take it into your place of employment, and hang it up in your lunchroom, we would all be fired for sexual harassment. So right there, that should tell you that that should not be available to our children. It's highly inappropriate for our kids. Another litmus test that you could do is, if they took that book and you adapted it to a film, would we be showing that film generally to our students? The answer is no, which it would be, because we all know the content of that book, then we should not have that in our resource center in the schools. It's not appropriate, we shouldn't have it, our taxpayer dollars should not have it, and it's available at the Wheaton Public Library. So for the parents out there saying that we're banning books, and referring to us as Nazis and Nazi Germany, that's just very inappropriate. We're vetting material for our children. It's available at the Wheaton Public Library if parents want to take their kids there and discuss the book there. And I find it very strange that this book is the only book that can be used for students having an identity crisis. Of all the very smart people in this room with lots of letters after your last name, it's only this book that can be used to help integrate them, and to help them with what they're going through, only this book, nothing else. Come on. It's not true, and we all know it. We have other things that we can use to help them besides this one book. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Harold Longs.
Good evening. I just wanted to talk about, say anything about the Gender Queer book and, and the closed session. I went through the Illinois School Code and the State Code, and there's nothing in the State Code that allows you to go to closed session, discuss the book. Media complaint is not a part of closed session. It lists a whole list of other items that are considered, so I don't understand, I don't know why you guys lack transparency and discussion about whatever that complaint is about the book. Everybody seems to be very concerned about it. And in the past, you guys have also been in violation of the Open Meetings Act by keeping things in private that they should have been out in the public view. I agree with the last lady, I think that book is not proper. I had a friend look it up at, on booklooks.org, it's rated a four out of five, which means it's not for minors, it contains adult contact, not for children under 18. So this book is not a good book, it should not be in the classrooms, and if a kid took a picture of that on his cellphone and texted it to somebody else, he could be suspended for sexting. Am I not correct, or? So I think this book is not allowed, should be allowed anywhere near any kids or in public schools. And also this, like she said, the books are in every library except the Winfield Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longs. Next up is Alicia O'Connell.
Hi, good evening. I am speaking to you tonight about the media complaint. However, I am not here to appeal to you about the content of Gender Queer. Rather, I'd like to know why the discussion about the content is taking place in closed session. No parent or community member cares to know who initiated the book challenge, nor are we concerned with the name of any staff member who purchased the book. We want to know what you believe about the book and its availability to minors. Given the book is sexually explicit with graphics of oral sex, dildos, masturbation, chest binders, bloody vaginal knives, and incestuous fantasy, I'm going to conclude the complaint was initiated on those grounds. Therefore, the community deserves to hear from their superintendent and elected board members what their rationale is for keeping or removing the book. And please, don't spin this into a personnel or policy issue. It is a content issue, and should be addressed as such. However, I can only assume this since the last book challenge was also shrouded in secrecy. Why do the leaders of this district want to discuss this behind closed doors? Why are parents denied the opportunity to hear what each board member's opinion is? We elected you, we want to know what you think, and we want to know if you should be reelected. We want to hear what your position is regarding the consumption of sexually explicit material by minors. This I know. There isn't a single conviction or position that I hold that I wouldn't be willing to give a robust public rationale for why I hold it if I were asked, especially if it were on behalf of children. What makes you believe you are immune from the accountability for the reasoning behind your decisions? After all, you were elected to a public office in a public school system. I say, stand tall, stand proud, and publicly defend your position with a clear conscience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Next up is Kelly Gillenwater.
Hi, I'm Kelly Gillenwater, a resident of the district. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I was encouraged to remind every single one of you that you have taken an oath to protect our children through your DCFS qualifications and verification. You have not been protecting our children, and it's gone on too long. Where are we supposed to turn when the people we turn to to protect our children fail to do so? That only leads us to legal recourse. We don't want to go there. We want you to do what is right and protect our kids. In the class of 21 had an opportunity to rent out a movie theater and go to the movies during COVID protocols. Through the high school, they were given choices of G-rated, maybe one or two PG-13 movies, no R-movies were allowed. Some of these students were 18. If we can't allow our kids to go to a movie that is R-rated, how do you allow a book of this nature to be in our schools? The person who purchased this book technically can be arrested for putting pornographic material in our schools. Any child that has that book in their home, and a sibling sees that book and shares it with another friend, and they go home and tell those parents, and that parent calls that parent up, do you understand how this spreads and gets spread about? Those are felony acts. Do you really want to put our innocent children in these positions? I implore you to stand by the oath you took and do what is right. This book has no place in our schools, as well as numerous other actions you have been pursuing and allowing in our schools, to the point that many of us have removed our children after being lifelong residents of this district.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. Next up is the consent agenda. Acceptance of gifts from Madison Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Washington Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Weasbrook Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Hubble Middle School PTA, approval of middle school novels, approval of the resolution appointing treasurer, approving the treasurer's bond and special issue bond for lease certificates, approval of the treasurer's bond coverage, approval of mileage reimbursement rate for July 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, approval of the IASB 2022-2023 annual dues, approval to open previously closed minutes, approval of waste and recycling services contract bid, approval of Organic Life LLC Food Service Management contract renewal, approval of cyber liability insurance with click, approval to add serious safety hazard route, bus route, Lincoln Elementary, approval to add serious safety hazard bus route, Bauer Elementary, approval of the Microsoft Volume Licensing Agreement renewal, approval for VMware support renewals, approval of Cisco Flex phones and HANS renewal, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes, June 15th, 2022, open and closed, June 29th, 2022, special meeting with IASB, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to February 2021 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any other items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler?
No additional information other than just want to again thank our three PTAs for the generous, generous donations to the district, and I just want to point out on the personnel report this evening, you will be approving the hire of a new assistant principal at Pleasant Hill, Keith Murray. He will be replacing our, who now left P-Hill to go to Whittier as our, our new principal. So welcome to Keith. That's it.
Okay, are there any questions or comments regarding consent agenda from board members?
Two things. First off, for PTAs.
Yep.
Right, cool. I apologize.
I want to leave out Hubble since we're here. My only comment is on the Organic Life contract. I know that was a question I asked Dr. Schuler by email, just for my own clarification. So we're going on, back on the National School Lunch Program for the high schools. Understand that we're going to probably have, the intent from Organic Life is to still have high-quality food. I'd like to try to find some opportunities to survey the students during the course of the year to see what they think, and, you know, if they're positive about it, that'd be important to know. If they're not, you know, it'd be good for us to have those options going into the possibility of recompeting it. So just listen to the student voice, try to take some opportunities to get their feedback.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Next up is the policy posting consent agenda. We have eight policies for approval to post for public review and comment. Revised Policy 2.230, revised policy 4.70, revised policy 5.80, revised policy 6.290, revised policy 6.80, revised policy 7.15, revised policy 7.270, rewritten policy 7.285. Are there any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information?
No, just that your policy committee reviewed all of these updates. Most are a result of either five-year review or legislative updates that brought about tweaks in a number of the policies, but the HR policy committee reviewed them and recommended that we bring them forward to the board for public posting tonight.
Any board members have questions regarding the posting of any of these policies? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is our first action item, approval to post the tentative budget and set the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 budget. I see Dr. O'Keefe is walking up there. Dr. Schuler, anything you want to add prior to that?
No, just want to express my appreciation for Dr. O'Keefe and the team in the, in the business office that worked to, to bring this together. Well, this is a presentation at one point in time here in July. It's reflective, as you see up on the screen, of a budget calendar that started back in January. So, Dr. O'Keefe?
Good evening, thank you. Just a quick recap of where and how we get to this point. So underneath the school code, there are certain things that we have to do related to the overall budget. So back in, in each month of January, we ask you for the authorization to begin preparing the next year's budget at the end of January during our At the end of January, during our committee of the whole meeting, we review five-year forecasts and get some perspectives on what the budget potentially could look like on the revenue and expenditure side of things. And then, really, I haven't drilled down on all the activity that happens between, really, the beginning of February and the end of June, but it's a lot of just work with each of our departments, work with each of our schools, making sure that what we're putting into place, certainly on the tentative side of what is known, is accounted for, both on the revenue and expenditure side. We put together the tentative budget then, wrap it all together within the business office, bring it to the finance committee, which we did last week, review it for the finance, review it with the finance committee, see if there's any feedback specific from that group, bring it to you. This is the tentative. You're not approving the budget tonight. This is actually approval to post the tentative budget tonight. One of the requirements under school code is that we have a tentative budget posted for 30 days. So, that notification actually goes out in the Daily Herald and will be posted at the SSC tomorrow, along with copies of the tentative budget, put up onto our website. Then, after that 30-day period, and in this case, it's going to be at the August regular board meeting on the 24th, we actually have a public hearing, which allows the public to bring forward any comments or questions related to the budget. And then, we come back in September and ask you to approve the final budget at that point and bring up any specific changes that have occurred between the tentative and the final budget. So, really, the budget from a school district perspective in the state of Illinois is almost a nine-month process from beginning to end. Just a few highlights of some information out there related to us in general prior to the budget. So, just a little bit of a five-year history, looking at our operational revenues. And again, operational revenues are the Ed Fund, which is Fund 10, the Operations and Maintenance Fund, which is Fund 20, Fund 40, which is Transportation, and then our working cash, i.e. the piggy bank, which is Fund 70. So, this does not include debt service or IMRF or capital projects. And as you can see with the big red boxes, traditionally, the vast majority of our funding does come from local sources. The vast majority of our expenditures are really categorized into two areas, salaries and benefits. Our operating expense per pupil, meaning from an operations perspective, what do we spend on each pupil on an annualized basis? If you see here, we are third from the right, just about dead even with Elmhurst. We are typically in that middle of the pack as it relates to our expense per pupil and certainly view being very conservative with how we spend our funds and still providing a high-quality education as the goal, not only through the business office, but representing you, the Board of Education, in our community. And then, our fund balance history, you see there was a few years of an increase that dropped just a little bit in fiscal year 21. I actually, based on the amount of revenues and expenditures that have come in from fiscal year 22, still unaudited, expect that to drop a little bit further, just because our fund balances overall aren't significantly increasing on the operating side, but our overall revenues do increase, and that's the mechanism that you divide to figure out what your actual fund balance percentage is. So, anything above 25% still in the state of Illinois is considered exceptional from the state's perspective in terms of overall fund balances. Just some highlights on the revenue side of things. So, this specific budget ends up being impacted by two different levies. So, the first half of the year revenues related to the last 2021 levy, and then the second half of the year revenues related to levy 2022, which we will bring to you in November. So, our assumptions are, we do have a 5% increase in our overall levy. And then, there are two other major things that are happening related to new property and/or shifts in property taxes. The big thing for this upcoming end of year is we are being told by the City of Wheaton that TIF number two will expire, and then any specific taxes related to incremental taxes that have been kept by the City of Wheaton will actually flow back out to the public agencies, so ourselves, library, and other agencies. That from an equalized assessed value is around $45 million, and then that $45 million will get applied against our actual extended tax rate, so roughly $4.80. So, that's about $2 million we're anticipating in money flowing into the system. It's not new taxes to the taxpayer. This is the shifting of where those funds specifically are headed. And then, the third piece is new construction. We're estimating $40 million in new construction, and one of the big pieces that's included in that is the Arden Apartments that are in Warrenville. The Assessor, the township Assessor, did not include, through a petition, that $14 million in incremental value for Arden in levy year 2021, but we anticipate that being calculated and added into levy year 2022, and that's a big chunk of it. And same concept, if we're looking at 40 million roughly in equalized estimated values times a tax rate of about $4.80, it's about $2 million in new money. And it's not a new tax to those that are already in the system, it's just new taxes on properties that have not been taxed in prior years. CPPRT, which is corporate personal property revenue taxes, so it's related to a very long story in history in the late '70s, but those are taxes that flow in from corporations through local governments to help offset taxes that were reduced back in the late '70s. That comes in. Interest earnings, even though the market is moving, interest earnings aren't moving significantly. It will be interesting from our perspective to see if there are, especially after CPI being announced this morning at 9.1% as of June, if the Federal Reserve takes more action in September and beyond September, because once they do take action, typically, we see interest rates rise, but we're being conservative with those estimations. Then, obviously, we've got some state funding from the evidence-based funding model, which we push into the Ed Fund, O&amp;M. We push a portion of the evidence-based funding into our bond and interest fund to pay for our Jefferson lease certificates, because we do not use our debt service taxes to pay for that. So, that's money that comes out of the operating side. And then, we push a little bit of EBF into transportation. Then, we also get reimbursements from the state on special education tuition, driver's ed, and then special ed and regular education transportation. Then, we have the federal piece. So, we have the National School Lunch Program, which is a reimbursement model. We have Title I plus Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA, flow-through and preschool, Medicaid, and then certainly, we have our other newest federal grants that Dr. Schuler referenced before, SER II, and then certainly, our biggest one right now is ARP-SER or SER III. On the expenditure side of things, salaries and benefits are set. So, our teachers have a 3.5% increase on their contract, classified staff at 3%, non-union and administration is at 3%. Benefits, so our actual medical, dental, life insurance benefit renewal period does not follow our fiscal year. It follows a period of 9-1 through 8-31. PPO was a 7.2% increase. HMO was up 5.6, and dental had a slight decrease. Overall, if we use federal dollars to pay for positions, then there is a TRS-fed rate that we have to use. That's been bumped up just a teeny bit to 10.5%, 10.49% this year. And then, finally, we've got on the IMRF side of things, so the board does pay benefits into the IMRF system in the same way it pays benefits into the TRS system for our classified staff within IMRF. That decrease, at least projected a preliminary decrease for calendar year 23, moves from 8.91% to 6.76%. So, it's a nice drop, and that's all actuarial-based. It comes directly from IMRF, not something that we calculate or determine ourselves. IMRF, just one other quick note, operates on a different year than we operate. So, we operate on a fiscal year of 7-1 to 6-30. IMRF operates on a calendar year, so 1-1 to 12-31. Other big purchases from the purchase side, supplies, things certainly focusing on our curriculum and supporting all the efforts from that perspective, continuing to refresh our technology and build and robustly build our technology. We've got our food service, our custodial, and our transportation contracts. We're always monitoring and managing our energies, so whether it's electricity, natural gas, sanitation, or phone and water. We certainly have costs related to outplacing students with special needs into specific schools that meet their IEP goals, and we've got our student activity accounts at each of our schools, and then overall, as I mentioned, our lease payment for Jefferson. And one other just quick note, as part of the Sherman-Durges policy and your investment back into our schools, we have been moving $7.2 million out of the O&amp;M Fund into capital projects to pay for things, and these are all the items that Dr. Schuler mentioned earlier that are in the docket and we anticipate will be finished this summer. Some quick fund highlights. So, education fund, we've got a revenue estimate of roughly $162 million, and as you see, 78% of that comes from property taxes. The second biggest piece, at least at this point, although not traditionally, is the federal revenue, and that's really related to the SER funds. And then, our third piece is the evidence-based funding model. On the expenditure side, salaries, benefits make up 85% of our costs within the Ed Fund. O&amp;M, roughly at a $20.5 million revenue. Again, property taxes, the vast majority of that, a little bit from the evidence-based funding model, because we are using SER III to help support some of the projects that we have going this summer. That's also a chunk on that revenue side. Expenditures, the vast majority of this is to pay for services. So, 50% of what we're doing is paying for services, and then you see supplies and materials are second, and then we get into contingencies for salaries and benefits following suit. Debt service, pretty straightforward. It's principal, it's interest, so 95% of that comes from property taxes, and we do push some evidence-based funding model money in there, again, to make sure that we can pay for the lease certificates at Jefferson. The expenditure side is all outsourced. It's another object, because all that money gets sent off to different banks and financial institutions to take care of our debt. Transportation, roughly a $10 million revenue budget. It's a little bit different here. The property taxes are not as great in the transportation fund on the revenue side, specifically because we have pretty significant reimbursements that come from the state, both for special ed transportation and regular ed transportation. On the expenditure side, a lot of that is all purchase services, so it's paying all of our carriers that we have relationships to make sure that we can transport our students, and then there's a tiny bit of my salary and my benefit tucked in there as a whole too. IMRF and Social Security, this is a specific designed account that we can do nothing but pay for IMRF costs, pay for FICA costs, and pay for medical costs out of this group. So, the vast majority of that's property taxes, and everything is related to benefits. Quick little recap on capital projects, not a whole heck of a lot of revenue, because it's fund transfer balances from O&amp;M in the capital project, but something that's new related to our last tax levy. If you recall, in November, we talked about the new recapture clause, which was related to rebates and refunds that had been paid back to taxpaying groups, whether it be commercial, industrial, or residential. We had no way to recoup those dollars, because those refunds occurred after taxes were paid. So, at the state level, just a little bit a year ago, they did approve what we refer to as the recapture clause, and there is supplemental tax revenue that's been added to every one of our tax bills here in Illinois, and we're pushing that supplemental tax revenue, that specific recapture of what it is that we lost in the past into the capital fund projects to support our capital needs in the future. And like in this case, the dollars that we're projecting for next year will help pay for the vast majority of our two playgrounds that we'll be updating at Lowell and at Bauer. Working cash, really nothing in and out outside of interest earnings. So, big-picture stuff, all of our funds, local revenue is about $180 million, state revenue is a little bit more than 20, federal revenue a little bit less than 18, so roughly $217 million in aggregate. That does not include the $7.2 million that we move from O&amp;M to capital, because from the state's perspective, that is not considered revenue, it's just a transfer of funds. Where all that comes from, so roughly of our overall revenues, 80% from property taxes, 8% from the feds, 6% from evidence-based funding, and then 3% from other type of state funding reimbursements. If we look at the operating side, again, operating is Fund 10, Fund 20, Fund 40, and Fund 70. So, that's the Ed Fund, O&amp;M Fund, Transportation Fund, and Working Cash. Roughly $160 million in revenue, a little bit more than $19 million, excuse me, from local, a little more than $19 million from the state, and the same number from the feds. So, that gives us an operating fund revenue projection for the year of slightly more than $197 million. Similar breakdown, a little bit less on the property tax side, because it does not include debt service. Expenditures by all funds, and this includes the 7.2 that we will transfer from O&amp;M to capital and then spend on our capital projects this summer. So, you see roughly $145 million in salaries and benefits, a little bit more than $26 million in purchase services, about $8.2 in supplies, 8.7 in total in construction outlay, so that's other capital needs that happen outside of just our summer projects. And then dues, fees, tuition, and other, which also other includes our debt service payments in the $35.5 million range, for a total estimated expenditure of roughly 2023, $750 million. That breakdown looks like this. So, salaries and benefits accounts for 67% of our overall budget, and you see the breakdown between other groups. Purchase services, other objects, which is our debt service and payment to outside agencies for tuition, follow suit there. On the operating fund side of things, on the expenditure end, again, salaries and benefits, purchase services, supplies, the big difference, capital outlay changes, as does our dues, fees, and other, because this does not include capital projects or debt services. So, on the operating fund side, we're estimating $188.6 in terms of millions, in terms of expenditures. That breakdown looks a little bit different when you pull away capital projects and debt service. So, capital, excuse me, salaries and benefits, when we're talking about our operating funds, account for 77% of our anticipated expenditures. An all-fund summary on the revenue side, we're, like I mentioned before, a notch north of $217 million, and that does not, once again, include the $7.2 million transfer. Expenditures roughly of $216.5, with a projected operating balance in aggregate throughout all of our funds of a little bit north of $800,000. Breakdown of what that looks like revenue-wise by fund, obviously, our Ed Fund is the biggest fund that we have, so three-quarters of all revenue that we anticipate coming in flows into the Ed Fund, and then you can see the breakdown between the other funds behind that. Expenditures by all funds, same thing, 75% of our total expenditures come out of the Ed Fund, and then there's the breakdown between debt service and the rest of our groups. And then, the overall operating budget summary, $197 million, a little bit north of that in revenues, roughly $188.6 million in expenditures. That leaves an aggregate operating balance within the operating funds. Again, those are Funds 10, 20, 40, and 70, of $8.4 million, but that does not include us backing out the $7.2 million that we actually moved from capital, excuse me, O&amp;M to capital projects, which would leave us, if we're looking at the operating side of things, an estimated $1.2 million surplus. But we've, as I showed just a few slides before, our overall budget, we're anticipating a surplus of around $800,000 at this point. And then, just a little comparison year over year, operating revenues in fiscal year 22, almost $187.5 million. Projected operating revenues in fiscal year 23, a little bit north of $197 million, and then $179.6 in expenditures, and then, of course, those are unaudited numbers versus an anticipated expenditure of $188.6 in fiscal year 23. Again, just the operating side, not our aggregate budget, so roughly a 5.15% increase in revenues with a 5% increase in anticipated expenditures.
Board members have any questions for Dr. O'Keefe?
Can you talk or discuss the increase in healthcare? Just the increase in healthcare.
Sure.
At one point, a few years back, we went out to bitter, we changed our strategy a little bit. Is it time to change our strategy again? Maybe it's just made some background on the cost increase to help inform that?
Sure. So, we're part of NIHIP, which is the Northern Illinois Health Insurance Plan, so that's a group. And increases are based on utilization, and then they get banded. So, there's a band that's used to make sure that whatever funds Blue Cross Blue Shield believes it needs for the whole pool goes to Gallagher, and then they ban all the increases. All three of our, two of our increases and then our slight decrease slide right in the middle of the band. And it's because our--
Into the what?
Slide right in the middle of all the bands. So, where those increases are average increases, they turn out to be average increases within the NIHIP pool. There are some districts that are lower than that, some districts that are higher than that. Really, the driver behind it, COVID-related costs, anticipated future costs that are unknown, that got built in by Blue Cross-- unknown, that got built in by Blue Cross Blue Shield. We're at 100% plus utilization in both PPO and HMO, meaning for every dollar that we're putting in, we're spending more than a dollar, meaning we're getting value out of what we've already put into the system. That gets recouped at some point. And then just the market in general. Everything that we're told by NIHIP is medical increases, on average throughout the market, are in the 8% to 12% range. So, I don't, to answer your question, I don't think we're at the point yet that we need to look at our strategy. But I will be very interested to see when our next renewal comes, and we get those preliminary numbers next late January, early February, if this is a trend within the pool and something we should further consider, or if our utilization is still driving our experience, which in turn is driving our cost.
What would the process be for reviewing that? Is that a board request? Is it just part of operations to change our strategy?
Yeah. I mean, I think it'd be a board request. My, I guess my assumption, Rob, would be that's probably something you might want to have your finance committee take a look at, and look at the numbers that sit behind it. And I guess just a reminder, in terms of strategy, prior to joining NIHIP, we were self-funded. So, usage was completely driving what your renewal was for the following year. So, truly outside of NIHIP, if we are sitting right smack in the middle of the band in terms of our usage, then I don't think you'd see a distinctly different outcome in terms of the cost renewal if we were self-funded. But the other thing, reason I direct that to the finance committee is that there continue to be, and we do look at other options for adjusting healthcare expenses as well. So, I've made some concerted effort to help guide employees from PPO plans to HMO plans where appropriate. That's a cost savings, both for the district and for the employee, if it makes sense. And since within that, our benefits office has done, continues to try to build educational campaigns to guide people to that. So, there's some other things that we can, we can look at as well. And then the last thing, I guess I will remind you, is reviewing the status of where we are is certainly something that's appropriate to the purview of the board. A future discussion around adjustment and strategy, we'll have to bring in our collective bargaining units.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Clarifying question. The 7.2 increase that's shown in here, that's like per headcount. It doesn't include the fact that our salary, like naturally, is our salaries. If we have higher headcount, we're going to have higher expense.
Sure. You're talking about the 7.2% increase for PPO?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's related specifically to the cost of the plans. But obviously, if, as Dr. Schuler has mentioned, we have people migrating into PPO, it's a greater cost for the individual and for the board. Migrating out of PPO turns out to be a reduction in your overall costs and for that and the employee.
Thanks. So, this is an overall participation rate? It's not a per person?
Nope.
That's sorry. That's why I misunderstood. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe?
I just have a couple questions. I don't have a question on this, but could you go back two slides, please?
One more? Go forward. That one?
Very good. Perfect. I thought I missed one, and so that's why. Just two quick questions. So, in the education fund expenditure projections, on page four, the tuition costs, those are the costs for outplaced students? It's Object 670.
Yes. Any, any, any object in the 600, so that tuition line item, 670? Yeah, that's all costs related to students that are outplaced.
Okay. So, are we anticipating a decrease in, I mean, well, obviously, there's a decrease is that because we, our total number of students is less?
It could be two reasons. One, this is, the column to the left is last year's budget, not last year's actual. We did not spend what we actually budgeted last year. So, the number that you see in front of you to the right, that's estimated for this year, would be based on headcount, and then comparing it to where our budget was, our actuals were last year. So, those two columns may not necessarily flow naturally. And if there's some distinct changes in those columns, that means either A, we way overbudgeted in the past, in the previous budget year, or way underbudgeted. But this is what we're expecting based on headcounts that we know of, as of two weeks ago, plus costs related to the types of services that they receive, what we expect those expenditures to be for next year.
Okay, thank you. Does that, do those expenditures listed under 670 tuition cover the costs incurred when students receive services in patient facilities or daycare, day programs?
Any program that is outside of our specific district is where these, where that's budget lies. So, sometimes we might have services that are being provided by our own staff, you know, OTPT, speech, other things that happen outside of a school building, but maybe in their home, or maybe at another location. That would actually end up being in a different line item. Then this, this is purely to pay institutions that are servicing students with special needs, the actual cost of what that program is.
Okay. That answers the question I had. Then the last question regarding headcount and the decrease in headcount that we are experiencing, does that influence, how much of an impact will that have on the state funding that we're receiving this coming fiscal year?
You mean a change in student headcount?
Correct.
So, that's one of the pieces of the formula, but it's not a main driver of the formula. It's one of, Dr. Schuler, there are 27 different line items in the evidence-based funding model. So, it potentially could have an impact on us in the future. But based on how EBF has been developed and defined, we're held harmless within EBF, meaning the way that EBF has been designed, we should not receive anything less in the next fiscal year than we did the prior fiscal year, whether that includes the additional funding from the state or not.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe?
Two questions. These are, these are pretty high-level questions. First off, you know, inflation is, we all know what's going on with inflation right now. I think over the years, prior boards, this board's done a really good job of, in our bargaining agreements, outsourced services, trying to index these things to our limits with CPI. Are there any other areas within the budget that we don't, we're not protected by some kind of language within our contracts that we could be exposed to higher spikes in inflation?
Not from an outsourcing perspective. Our biggest potential area of gap is if the state decides to, when it comes to transportation reimbursement, prorate that beyond dollar-for-dollar reimbursement model. So, right now, on the special ed side, the state automatically prorates special ed reimbursement for transportation at 80 cents on the dollar. And then moving forward, and based on past history, they've prorated it even further than that, on average, around 95%. So, we're not getting 100% of every dollar that we spend reimbursed from the state for special ed transportation. Regular ed transportation's a little bit different, but that still is a proration. That proration's been in the mid to upper 90s. But if for some reason there was a significant, and there was probably five or six years ago, some significant cash issues at the state, the first thing that we saw hit was mandated categoricals and transportation reimbursement, both on the special ed and regular ed side, are mandated categoricals. That's, that's the biggest gap. Or if for whatever reason, from MCATs, which is special ed tuition reimbursement plus transportation, if for some reason the state does not decide to pay for payments in a year, that's potentially one of our, our gaps. That would only impact the transportation fund. We have a healthy balance in the transportation fund, but still, it's a risk if the state does not do what it's supposed to do.
And so, just to kind of, before I get to my second question, piggyback on Angela's comments, so outsourced special education, huge costs in our budget. Is that an area of risk if the institutions that we send our kids to, if they incur a spike in, in costs, is that trickle back to us?
The state actually controls the tuition rate for all those approved institutions. So, I personally have not seen anything significant in terms of a spike. It's usually a few percentage points each year, but all of that is driven, not by the individual ownership groups or those providing services, but by state, by the state itself.
And then my, my second question is really about our debt service portion of our levy. So, the operating budget, as you've clarified multiple times, is really just, does not include debt service, and that the operating levy's capped by CPI. And so, when we get to December, when we have to approve the levy amount, the debt service portion is outside of that. And that, is this one of these years going into the '22 levy that we see, start to see a dip in the debt service levy?
Actually, '22 will be equal to what '21 was, a little bit north of 18 million. And then after levy year '22, that's when we drop to 14, and then that's when we drop beyond that, too.
So, kind of projecting forward, when we do our '23 levy, it's going to be based on the inflation that CPI for this year, right? When we do the '23 levy, it's going to be, it's going to be indexed to what CPI is in 2022.
Yes, correct.
Correct. So, so, we'll probably have another maximum CPI, which will partially be kind of insulated by a decrease in the debt service levy--
Correct.
--for our taxpayers.
Right. Because that specific tax cap relates to operating funds. As you said, not the debt service. We, we ask for what we need to make sure we can make our debt service payments in the debt service fund.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple. The comparative on the expense per pupil, you know, Indian Prairie's quite a bit lower. Is that, do you know if that's a result of them being a bigger district? Is that the driver?
I think that's one of the drivers, that there's more students in that district. I can't tell you for sure if that's the case, because I don't know how they spend their money, but that certainly would be one of the factors.
Yep. And just to point out, on the capital fund, we have increased 500, 600,000 because of playgrounds.
Yep.
So, just to, that caught my eye at first. And the last thing is CPPRT. I know we, we received a little more than we expected this year, and we, so we did increase that budget, but we went at it conservatively, because that's a number that historically has been volatile, and--
Correct.
--there's not really a good handle on that, so.
Yeah. So, the budget for CPPRT is the same this fiscal year as it was last fiscal year, even with, as you mentioned, that increase in funding. We should, ideally, although it's not typically happening, get an update from the Illinois Department of Revenue before the final budget, so at least we can get what their estimates are and consider that into the final budget. But every year, it's not always necessarily the case where we see that number. We felt collectively, on the conservative side of things, we knew that the $2 million plus was safe in fiscal year '22, and felt it would be appropriate at least to start there in fiscal year '23.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the posting of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023, and set the public hearing for said budget on Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM here at Hubble Middle School, as presented. May I have--
Someone?
Who is it? Mr. Long?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blatner. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes. Next up is approval of the resolution authorizing transfer of monies from Operations and Maintenance Fund to Capital Projects Fund. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, just, Dr. O'Keefe, and a quick background on that. This is just what's allowing us to do the official transfer to pay for our capital projects this summer.
Correct. But in order to actually do that, we've got to ask the board to approve the resolution.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing transfer of monies from the O and M Fund to Capital Projects Fund as presented.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Next up is approval of revision of Citizens Advisory Committee CAC bylaws. I know Mr. Hanlon pulled it off. Dr. Schuler, do you have anything you want to--
Yeah, just let me just provide a little bit of background on this agenda item. A lot of this was in the agenda report that went with it. So, the original charter and bylaws of CAC were developed in 2015, when that committee was launched. In 2019, we brought a subcommittee of CAC together to review the bylaws. And really, the focus at that time was on making sure that the operation of the committee matched, obviously, the charter and the parameters that were established on paper. Part of the bylaws do indicate every three years that those bylaws get reviewed. And so, we brought the committee from CAC this year to review them again. So, a subcommittee of five members of CAC came together, worked with me over a series of meetings to really look at every section of the charter and the bylaws. I would suggest a couple of things that really kind of drove their work. One was an effort to make sure that any language that wasn't really needed in the bylaws was removed. I think the committee found that there were some extra access language in there that just didn't need to be there, wasn't significantly influencing the operation of the committee. Two, wanted to make sure that it clearly aligned with how the committee was operating, including really the focus of the meetings and the conversation. And I would say that over the, really, the eight years that the committee's been in operation, it has continued to evolve from, I think, one that kind of at its origin was receiving a lot of information to providing a lot more feedback and engagement around topics. So, we wanted to align that. And then three, that subcommittee came back together after a second subcommittee focused on membership, did some of its work to look very specifically at the section in the bylaws that outline how new members are selected into the, to the committee, and tried to bring a little bit of clarity around that and just the background around that. There were a lot of different kind of criteria for looking at balance within the committee or diversity within the committee. A lot of that was articulated, certainly in the, in the background, as we looked not only at geographic representation or involvement on the committee, as we looked at the demographic of the school district itself and representation on the committee, of diversity of thought and perspective and what came into conversation, but also just diversity in terms of, we wanted a balance of both people actively using the school system right now and those that live in the community or obviously supporting it financially, but not currently, I guess, active users of the school. But I think as the group came together this year with a lot of applicants and not a lot of open seats on the committee, trying to balance all of that criteria and really work through, is there one of those criteria that really kind of rises to the, to the top that was one of the things that the committee then tackled, is coming back and looking just specifically at how that works? So, what you see proposed to you this night, tonight, in your agenda, is a reflection of the work that, that, that subcommittee did. And again, I, I think from the board perspective, I recognize when I moved this forward, that you were looking at this for the first time. So, you collectively, as a board, don't have an opportunity to look at the revised bylaws until we put them in front of you together. And so, you don't have the benefit of several meetings to kind of understand, you know, the change itself. But I think the desire is to continue to make sure that CAC is a form of input and engagement for the board. It is, I know, one of the groups that certainly you use as a, as a board, as you, as you take, take feedback. We want to continue to make sure that it is a group that I think offers significant value through the discussion we bring forward. So, again, this is up on the agenda. It was up as an action item for tonight. But I did remind myself in front of this meeting and remind the board that in the past and even around policy, you've often approved that over a two, two-meeting period. If you need additional time to kind of process feedback and, and question. And so, again, it's been moved to, to action, but you certainly, as a board, have a, have an option of taking a second month to make sure you take a good look-- month to make sure you take a good look at it if you want to.
Mr. Hanlon, you pulled it off. Do you want to start the conversation?
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate it. I also appreciate the perspective, and I support it, that the CAC has been a very high-functioning group and adding tremendous value, providing feedback to the community and to the board. I just, I think it's been a really nice success over the years. And so, when I read the revised bylaws, I really focused in Section 2, which were the goals, and I noticed what I would characterize as a significant shift or change in the bylaws, and I just want to understand that better. I want to think about it. I want to understand impact. You know, there's, I ask questions like, will more data be required? Do we have that data? You know, is that, what kind of work does that create for staff to pull that data together? Just all those kind of unintended outcomes of that significant change. So, I'd like that to be reviewed, or at least have the ability to think through it, whether that's an extra cycle or an extra period, or even ask a committee to take a look at it. I would kind of like to hear everyone else's opinion before we make a recommendation, but that was my reaction to, and why I was motivated to pull it off, the consent agenda. I just, I just think there's significant change, and I want to understand the outcomes of that change, what's going to, how it's going to impact. How it's going to impact our workload, staff, data required, things like that. Thanks.
Anybody else? Want to go?
Go ahead. I'll start first. All right, so I had a similar reaction to Rob. You know, I read this twice. The first time, kind of glanced through it and felt like I needed to go back to it. And the second time I read, I was a little uncomfortable with some of the, what I felt like was a shift in intent to the purpose of the Citizens Advisory Committee, mostly around, like Rob said, around the notion of goals changing to responsibilities and some of the specific language in there. I'll get into those in a minute. But there were some other language that I felt, you know, even in the original document, this wasn't really changed in the bylaws, but there's a statement in there that, you know, public schools only exist for public education. I don't think that's a fair portrayal of what school districts do for communities. Days, we see this across lots of different areas. You know, during the middle, meat of the pandemic, we were very active in helping, had a role in helping, you know, support our, members of our community that had, you know, food insecurity. I'm pretty close to what's going on with the school district up in Highland Park right now. There's lots of, there's lots of things the schools do that are beyond public education. So, that specific language, I think, could be tweaked a little bit to reflect really what the role of a school district is, and maybe how the Citizens Advisory Committee might have to adjust a little bit as well. You know, to me, the whole thing feels like a shift from advisory to oversight, and I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. Specifically, that's not the intent of this committee, is to give feedback, review issues that are important to us, to inform the board, specifically within some of the language within the now responsibility section. Section 2 should review all policies that impact students. We already do that. Most of these policies are reviewed, nauseam by our HR Policy Committee. I feel like that's a huge burden on our administration to do that again, and I'm not sure exactly, exactly what we're going to get out of that. And then, it says reflects views of all District 200 community members. I don't think that's possible, to have policies or even a committee that reflects all the views. Item D, review test scores and performance, that's pretty specific. You know, I think, as we've gone through the porsha of a graduate and talked about all the different elements of student learning, I think there's important things to measure outside of test scores. You know, there's been a lot of research to show that it's more than a test score, and so I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the specific language in that. We related to item F, the role's been, the board's been through exhaustive efforts to review our strategic goals, to ensure that they're clear, comprehensive, and measurable. I don't, I don't know that that's a huge role of the CAC, but that language is just to review those. There's, in the membership of the committee item, there's some duplicative language as it relates to, you know, no person shall be a member of the CAC as a board member, or that board administrator, that's mentioned twice. So, my first reaction was I think this needs to go back to maybe make sure the language is specific to the role of the CAC that we originally imagined as a school board when we created this, because it's not just about the committee now, this is the committee that's going to be in existence for, you know, three, four, or five more years, working with these bylaws. So, I'd like to maybe send it back a little bit and tweak it and address some of the issues that Rob and I have brought up.
Mrs. Booten, I'm just here ready.
Thank you, Rob and Brad. I agree with everything. I was a member of the CAC starting at its inception in 2015. I was on it until 2019, when I was elected to the board, so I have, I think, a good understanding of what the CAC does, and why it was formed, and what we do there. And just reading this, it's just, it just feels very different from what we were doing from its inception, and I think that was very succinct to what Brad said, that this is moving into oversight as opposed to advisory, and that's, that's not what this was meant to be. I'll get into some of the specifics here that I've noted. So, for Section 2 in particular, it just felt like it was focused, the way the wording was, that it was focused on the thought that there are problems in the school district that we need to make sure are not problems. And that, again, that's not what, what this was meant to be. It's there to give input on issues that are facing the Board of Education. It's not to be like, it just feels very aggressive to be, that was the feeling I got from it. The, I mean, like the words, like comprehensive check and challenge. To me, that is public comment, reaching out to the board, and elections. I just, again, it just feels aggressive to me. The policies, to review all of the policies, that's a board role, that's what the board does. We do that with our HR Policy Committee. That's not, we do that as elected officials. That's part of our elected official job, and as these say later on, we do not, we are not giving any authority to the CAC. And that felt, to me, like they were asking to do that piece of it. And so, I just, I'm going to be very frank, and I just think that whole thing needs to come out. And it, it's actually referenced in Section 11.2, which would have been on Page 5, where it says, "The collective CAC by majority vote may make policy recommendations to the Board of Education, and will be apprised of the board's reactions to these recommendations." Like, I think that's fair, but to review every single policy, that's a board role, that's a board role, in my, that's what I understand it. For number C, or, I'm sorry, letter C, I'm not sure why the word cooperation was removed, because, again, going back to when I was on the CAC, that was part of our role, was to have these discussions as a CAC, and then go out into the community and say, "This is what we're discussing." And I did do that a lot. You know, this is, you know, and things we were, you know, one of the things I remember talking about, well, the referendum was a big part of it, and school start times, and it was to go out and talk to people and to help them understand what we were doing, what the school district was doing. And so, I'm not sure why you would take out the word cooperation, because that should be what you would want to do as part, being part of an advisory committee on a school committee. The solicit community views, that is, and again, that is what the CAC is. That is our community view. I mean, in some of our policies and things that we've done, it states in there that it would be go to before community review, and we've always used the CAC as our community review. So, I think that that's what the CAC is, so I don't know, that that is something that is directly a, something we want the CAC doing. "To ensure the community sentiment is heard and considered." Again, I think that's a board role. That's our, that's our job, is to make sure that, you know, we're considering what we hear from the community. Let's see. Yeah, I agree with Brad on the test scores. That's something that we do on our dashboard, that's, again, that's part of our, of our job, and then to, you know, again, just the language to say, "To validate that the Board of Education are fulfilling the strategic educational goals and performance measures," that's the job of the Board of Education. That's what we do. That's one of our main jobs. So, again, I don't even, I'm not sure why that's in there. Review the strategic goals and ensure they are clear. Just the fact that that's like an actual line item, again, that's a board role. I mean, that was something we went to them. It said, "You, as you community, CAC, we would like your feedback on this." And I don't know that it needs to be called out specifically, because we would go to them for that. And I know this G was in the original, "Create the subcommittees as needed to study specific issues or conduct specific projects." I'm actually kind of wondering if that should be approved by the Board of Education, so that, that there's not, subcommittees created that are studying something that is just, is not part of our vision, is not part of what we're doing. I'm not, you know, I would like to hear what others think, but I just, I want to make sure that we're, we don't, as a committee that we vote on, and we vote on the members, I want to make sure that we, that they're not going off and talking about something that's just not even.
Susan, I just.
Sorry.
On that, there's language further in the document, though, that talks about mutual setting of goals. So.
Okay.
The goals are established upfront with input from the board in terms of topics that you might want the committee to address and topics from CAC. So, again, I.
Okay.
Hear the concern. I think the intent of that section is to say, there's going to be like a rogue subgroup from the committee that's going to go off and study something you're not aware of, but.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Going into the selection of CAC members, so this is, you know, this is something new, you know, I think all four years that I was on the CAC, this never had to be done. I think we were always had, like, exactly the number of people, if not less, you know, so this is sort of a newer phenomenon, which is great, that we have so many people who want to participate. Like, I think that's fantastic. I agree that we need to prioritize that we have representation from across our district. And so, if we know there's a certain area of our district that we don't have representation from, I would, wondering if we can add language in here for letter C, number two, that says something, is the fact that we need to actively recruit, try to make an effort to actively recruit from that area, whether it's reaching out to the principal or something and saying, "Hey, we don't have anybody from you. Do you, can you put together, could you do some?" I don't, and I'm not sure what that would look like, if the principal would give us some names and whatever, but I just think there needs to be a real, an active outreach to areas where we don't have representation. I also, you know, I like that, you know, that you're looking at, if they're, they have the ability to work constructively with others, and that they have an interest in public education, and to further the District 200 mission statement, I think that's all great. I am not terribly comfortable with this entire paragraph about reflecting the diversity of citizens of the district, and, you know, parents, non-parents, favorable or critical business owners. Some of that, I think, is, I think is worth keeping in there. This feels a little, and I feel like it's taking away from all of the equity work that we've talked about, and we've been talking about how we want to get diversity into various parts of our district, and I think to just to take that out completely doesn't reflect all that work that we're doing. So, I would like to see some of that language come back. Let's see. I had a question on the establishment of goals, that why was that removed? Like, the outline of the CAC goals should be submitted to the board to provide a base of information, direction between the board and the CAC. I'm not sure why that was removed. And then, lastly, I would like to propose, again, this is a fight, you can stay on for five years. And I know this was in the original, but I think, again, going back to when I was on, it was, you had a certain amount of people, and it was just sort of like, someone was like, "Yeah, I'll be chair," you know, and they just did it. I would like to change that to be a maximum term of two years instead of five years, because someone can be on there for five years, and I understand there's a vote and everything, but I, it's in line with what our PTA boards do, that you can't be in a board, in a particular board position for more than two years. And you can be on the board in a different, well, at least where I was, you could be on the board in a different position, but you could not keep being that same position past your, a two-year term. So, I just think that's a long time for, you know, I just think, and again, to get that diversity of community and to get more voices, to be a part of this, that I would like that, to see that revised to a shorter term. And my recommendation would be two years, based on that. So, I'm not sure how this all gets done, like, as far as this, all this feedback that we're giving, you know, what that looks like as far as having the CAC revise this again. I know that part of this is holding up the membership committee and what they need to do, and, you know, this is our, this is our committee. This is a Board of Education committee. And so, I'm, you know, I'm wondering if we, as a board, should write these bylaws, or how we, you know, get to where we think these bylaws should be. So, but I, I am very concerned about this whole Section 2. I think it's just overbearing. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask a question, following up on Susan's comment. Is it possible to have two members from the board meet with the subcommittee and review this document?
Yeah, yes, I think it, I think it would be, and I guess I would not recommend, I would not recommend that any one entity do this entirely on their own, right? This is intended to be a committee that serves in an advisory capacity to the board. So, I think the board, simply writing all the bylaws and handing it to CAC is not going to work. I think that's going to pull out some voice and obviously autonomy from that committee that I think is really important for you, right? I don't, and I believe you want to attempt to govern the voice out of the committee. So, Angela, I think that's actually, would be a really good suggestion in terms of process to bring a subcommittee of the board together with the bylaw subcommittee to work through all of this. You know, you've gone through a lot of feedback, and I know that I cannot possibly, nor could the committee likely, address every individual person's, like, litany of concerns, but I think if you can articulate specifically what those questions are, or the areas you at least want for kind of this joint subcommittee to explore again, I think that is the best path toward, you know, getting, again, at the end of the day, the bylaws need to be approved by the board, by the bylaws, they need to be approved by the committee, right? So, we need, I think the best way to develop that is to do it jointly if there's some concern.
And then, one more question. So, how is, how is the adoption of new bylaws or revised bylaws, holding up members? So, how is, how is the adoption of new bylaws or revised bylaws, holding up membership for this coming school year? I, can we not?
Just because of the fact that I think there is some, there's a significant amount of language change in that criteria for selection of, of members. And so, in getting that subcommittee to a point where they can come to a clear recommendation to advance forward, I think it is important that the bylaws clarification happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Yep. I, too, kind of felt like it was a little bit, going to a little more oversight and a little more action. I mean, I think it's great the way it's progressed and it has more involvement, but it is a Citizens Advisory Committee, not a Citizen Action Committee. I think on policy, that's, I agree, that's too much. I, I have no problem with them reviewing policies, but I, we might have the opposite effect of attracting members if all they're doing is, that policy works a lot, so I don't think they should be reviewing every policy. The change from thirty-six to thirty-five members, I understand that's to get an odd number, but when we have more applicants than members, I don't, I don't like even going down by one, because now we have one less person who's expressed interest that isn't going to be able to sit on the committee. So, if we're going to do anything, I'd rather go to thirty-seven, but that's a little nitpicky, but the, and I agree about all the language about representation by parents from different memberships and, and the diversity piece of it. I do think that's, that we should be careful about removing all of that language. The, yeah, the goals, I need to go back to that, because you mentioned that the goals are mentioned back, but we're number eleven where it's completely stricken. I do think that we should have some oversight of what main things we want them working on. And then the, where it talks about the, sorry, I don't, I don't remember, they have the To the public, where it talks about they can be learned about the schools was taken out, and I, I think that's an important, important piece that the CAC members should be learning about the schools. So, I thought taking that wording out was interesting. Agenda, I don't know how the agendas have been set historically. I don't know if that's primarily venue or conjunction with them.
Yeah, it's consistent with how we've outlined it here.
Pardon me?
It's consistent with how the, the proposed change is here.
Okay. So then I'm fine with that. And then, you know, on the minutes, there is a, you know, we, they, they have a meeting and then they approve the minutes the next month, and then we see them. So I don't know if there's a mechanism where we could see, you know, and I understand the need for that, but at the same time, that's, it's a, you know, it's six to eight weeks from the time they have discussions till we see it, so I don't know if there's some mechanism where we could get some of that feedback more time. That's it.
Okay, me? Unless you had something else you wanted to add. You know, I concur with my, you know, with my fellow board members. I, I do want to make a comment, though. I, I've been the one who's attended the most CAC meetings this year. It's an extremely high-functioning group, and I think that's a really important piece to keep in mind. I feel like this past year, and more than any year, we, they, they've tackled some pretty big topics and there's been some really good discussion amongst groups. And so, it's very valuable, so I want to make sure that we, you know, we, we, we keep this, we keep this group. So, something that, you know, I'm just thinking about, because I'm not going to read exactly which ones, right now, I had a couple of, you know, issues with two and I had a couple of issues with six, but all of them have been brought up at one and I'll, I'll bring up that one that I just want to address. But I'm wondering, in order to be productive to go forward, you know, with Mrs. Blatner's idea of maybe we have a subcommittee, maybe what we solicit is which are the pieces? And then, you know, if we have common, you know, there's a majority that, those are the ones that get tackled, because rather than try to rewrite these entire things, as I don't know, do we need to necessarily do that? The one, the only one that didn't get mentioned that I would like to mention is I questioned on where we're in six, again, and where it's talking about, I believe it's D, strive to obtain a broad pool of candidates across the district who have demonstrated abilities, interests, perspectives, and a desire to counsel and support CUSD 200's goals and objectives. My only thing is, is anything we come up with in six that we're looking for in our membership, let's make the, sure that the application is a tool that matches that. And so that would be my only other thing is, is that as you're doing this, let's make sure that whatever language is in here is measurable on an application. So that's my only other thing. So, I, I'm, I would agree. I, I like Mrs. Blatner's idea. I think we should form a subgroup, work with the bylaws committee, and then bring them back. So do we need to take a motion off the table or can we just...
You just would table this, this for tonight. You won't take any action or, or you can pass a motion to table the item, assigning it to a subcommittee to work with the bylaws.
Okay. So I need a motion to table the approval of the resolution of the Citizens Advisory Committee bylaws and appoint it to a subcommittee.
I'm moving.
Okay. Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Booton, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Okay. There are no discussion items, written reports. Attached to the agenda was the monthly financial reports, the FOIA report, the board communication log, fiscal year twenty-three federal relief funding. Committee reports attached were the board HR policy committee and the finance committee. Are there any other comments in regards to those board committee reports? Okay. Are there any other reports from board members? All right. Topics for future discussion, the 2022-2023 budget public hearing. Our next regular board meeting is August 24th, 2022, 7:00 PM here at Hubble. I'm going to move to adjourn closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemptions, five ILCS 120 slash two, subparagraph C, subparagraph one, five ILCS 120 slash two, subparagraph C, subparagraph two, and five ILCS 120 slash two, subparagraph, subparagraph C, subparagraph three. Is there a second?
Hmm.
Okay.
A second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Can you please call the vote, Mrs. Hutchinson?
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
There is action expected following the closed session.[1101.33]
Okay, we are going to reconvene in open session. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Blatner.
Here.
Ms. Booton.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
Ms. Crispin.
Here. For those listening and for those still in attendance, we did go into closed session for three items. We decided to only discuss the first item so that we could come back out here and open session for those who are still listening and for those who are here, so you were not here for, you know, two hours while we were deliberating on other topics as well. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read a motion. The motion is to put the motion out there. We will then have an opportunity to go around the table. Any board members who would like to share public, or share comments on why they're going to vote the way that they're going to vote can do so and have, we can have that in a public, you know, for the public to hear. Then we will mo, we will vote on the motion. So when I put the motion out there, that is not saying that that's motion is going to be, that it, we're voting right now. We're voting for the motion to be put onto the table. So I just want to clarify that. So, I move, following investigation on complaint M 2021 slash 22 slash O2, that the book in question remained in the public, in the high school libraries. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Can you call the roll, Ms.? No, we don't call the roll, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
Since I seconded it. So, first off, you know, I appreciate the thought, time, research that all of us put into this. I mean, it was incredible and that short discussion we had. You know, it was heartfelt, it was emotional, wasn't easy, very thoughtful. I think we all struggle a little bit with, you know, this decision. I looked at it from kind of a couple different perspectives, you know. Is the policy violated, you know, did the learning standards criteria be met? But then I looked at it from kind of the other side of this and I thought about choice. You know, this is something we've heard about for a long time in our community. You know, do we give students a choice whether they check this out? This is not a classroom curriculum book. This is something that students, high school students have the opportunity, should they choose to go into the library and check out. So I thought about that. You know, I thought about then kind of the consequences of our action tonight. I know a lot of high schools and a lot of school districts have dealt with this and addressed this issue. And so I thought about the consequences of our vote to our students, especially to those, those members of the LGBTQ community that are in our high schools as well as in our community. And I thought, you know, one of the data points that I've heard recently that I believe is true, I haven't validated this, but I've seen it in a couple different locations, that 70% of our LGBTQ youth are more likely to commit suicide. And so I thought about the consequences of our vote on those students and those members of our community. And so I, at the end, I kind of asked myself, you know, depending on our vote, can we just help one person, one student that's going through this? And if we can, that makes me feel good. And so with those, with that thinking and all the conversations we had, when I vote, I'm going to say yes.
Mrs. Booton, do you want to go next?
Sure. I'm not going to go into everything that I talked about in close, as I think people know that I do a lot of deep research into this and I, one of the first things I do and I have when we're presented with any issue is I approach it from, I have a theory or a starting point and I try to prove myself wrong and I try to find the other side of it. And I looked into the law and we're, we're not violating the law. If you keep reading into the law, there are exceptions for school libraries and materials for underrepresented groups. The policy that we have is student focused, on individual, individual student things and not media as a whole in our libraries that are chosen by professional librarians. I think the books in our library represent somebody's story. And we can find these stories hard to comprehend and hard to understand if they're not a part of our own experiences. And that can create a lot of inner conflict within us and, but I believe that's what we call a lifelong learner, that's what critical thinking is, is it makes you think and it challenges you to your core. And it can be very difficult, but I agree with Brad that in my research that the, it's without question that the LGBTQ community struggles with suicide and harm to self at a much higher rate than our cisgender peers. And with all of the information that we know and how much mental health struggles our children and our students are facing right now, I don't see how removing this book helps that crisis that we're facing in this, in our world. I, I think this book can really help somebody who is part of this community. I think this book was written for a very particular audience and I think that is who will seek it out. I don't think that this book will be, I don't think it's, it, students who don't identify with this, I don't think that's who's going to be searching for this book. And, and I agree that if we can help just one student by having this book, because not everybody can get to the public library, not, and to have that resource here, if they choose to see it, it's, it's their choice to, to look for that book. I just think we need to honor somebody else's story and I support keeping this book.
Mr. Long?
So, I too struggle with this book. I read the book before we, before we got the documentation for the complaint last month. And I had two things that I felt I empathized with the author and what her story was. I feel like some of the graphic parts that are getting most of the attention are kind of a small part of the book and if you look at them by themselves, it's a much different interpretation than if you read it in the context of the book. After reading all the complaint, I needed to read the book again because of, it really challenged my thinking and it really just cemented what my first reaction was. It made me empathize with that person. The, by the time you get to the, you know, the graphic part that a lot of people are opposed to, you know, it's, it's a small part of the book. And I feel like, like Susan and Brad said, if we help one person by giving them information and letting them have an outlet, you know, of a marginalized segment of our community, then I think that's a good thing. So I too will be voting to keep the book in the library.
Mrs. Blatner?
Similarly, I spent quite a bit of time reading the book, researching reviews on the book, I'm talking with parents, community members and members of the LGBTQ plus community. And, I'm sorry, Dave, you made me think of something that I want to add. Actually Brad and I'm going to throw this in here, I wasn't planning. But I, I do empathize with the thought of like, if this book can help one person, absolutely. Like I really empathized with the author when I read it. It was a hard book to read because of the turmoil that they go through. And I wonder, if you have a young developing mind who's questioning their gender, this book could be almost discouraging and depressing because it's a really rough journey that they experienced. So I don't know if we can say that it wouldn't necessarily help one person or not. But in talking to some members of the LGBTQ community, and I shared this in closed session, two of them in particular said, there are some helpful things in this book. There are some good points content wise, there's some helpful things. If we could just pull out a couple of those pages, we'd be fine leaving it. But the bar was that this was explicit and probably not appropriate for the younger students in our high schools. But I was made aware that, from the members that I spoke to of the community, that there are so many other books that aren't in our libraries that could offer the same support and the same content without the explicit sexual content. And they offered to give me a list, I can share that. And I suggest that, you know, our librarians pursue that because I think it is disappointing that some of those are not in our library already. that some of those are not in our library already. Here we are with this book. So I'll just quickly say, my vote will be that we remove the book based solely on the belief that explicit and or graphics sexual content and or pictures of sexual acts should be a criteria which excludes the book from placement in our libraries regardless of the gender orientation. And then we also discussed that we, that I would like to suggest that we revisit the policy and procedure that we have in place where only one person is responsible for bringing books into our high school libraries.
Mr. Hamlin.
Before I start, I want to support Ms. Blatner's quest that we revisit the policy. I think that's important, to have that debate, to have that dialogue, to have that discussion. So I appreciate that opportunity. I want to do what was asked, which is provide my analysis on this, what I went through as I was reading. It's a, it's a, it's a struggle, right, between two, two emotions I have. One is my personal belief system. And there are, there are two very specific instances in this book. Not the story, not the content, not the message, not, it has nothing to do with those things. But those two instances, and I, I just want to say this to be clear, I think on page 117, that pornography is cited as a source of information. And I fundamentally disagree with that, disagree with that. And the second is on page 167, that there's images depicting oral sex. And I, I struggle with that. I just, I have a really hard time personally working through that. That's one side of my struggle, one side of my analysis. The rest of the book, as I read through it multiple times, those are the two things that stood out, which are independent of the content, the topic, and every other issue dealt with in the book. Those stand alone. The other side of this book, as, as many people have cited, for me, it brought to light, or reminded me, maybe is a better way to say it, that the isolation, the struggles, the shame, the loneliness that some students may feel or experience is staggering to me. I can't cite a suicide rate, I can't cite, but to think, to put myself in those shoes, to feel isolation, to feel shame, to feel lost, to not have an adult or somebody to reach out to, to not have a support network, I can't imagine having to go through that as a teenager, I'll say. It just, it's just, it kills me. It brings tears to my eyes actually just thinking about it. So those, those are the two areas that I struggle with, right? Those, that trade-off, I don't know if you call it trade-off, that, those two points. And so I anchor back to a personal experience which is a teenager going through this journey that I know, knew, know. And how the students responded to that, to that teenager. They didn't cite a book reference, they didn't cite right or wrong, they didn't cite, what they did was they loved that kid and they came around that kid and, and just let them know that they're part of a team, they're part of a group, that we're here, we're here, you know, for you. And that was really, really significant experience I had. And that's what I, that's what I learned in the book. That's what I saw in the book. So I have a personal belief system which I shared with you and two very specific examples, which I have a real hard time getting over. But at the same time, I see that, that other side of that equation, loneliness, the shame. And I've seen a real world experience where that was offset by connection and students coming around that other student. And so that's my reasoning, that's my basis. And, you know, while I struggle, I'm going to put my personal belief system aside on this one. And the most important thing to me is the health and safety of a kid. It just is. And I'll still, I'll struggle with this after the vote, just so everybody knows. I mean, this is not a slam dunk at all for me. So, but I do anchor on that just loving a kid and, you know, I have to, I have to manage my own emotions on this aside, so.
Okay, my turn. I have to say in my seven years of serving on the board, I'm so grateful for everybody sitting around this table because the time that each individual spent on this decision, it's not an easy decision, I don't think, for anybody, but the time that went into really delving into this and thinking whether we agree or we don't agree, I think we need to be proud of the fact that we did that. We did that for kids, we did that for people. I read the book twice. I learned a lot. I, I, there are people out there that are going through internal conflicts. And I agree with everybody who said, "If there's one person we can help," by even just making the decision to keep this book in the library, whether they open the book or not, it shows that this board cares about kids. It cares about the LGBTQ plus community. I go back to also, we employ our librarians for their expertise in providing materials for students. Both of our high school librarians chose this book. Several neighboring high school libraries have chosen this book, our Wheaton Public Library has chosen this book. The thing I want us to remember is librarians are always revisiting their collections. So I'm going to go back to what Mrs. Blatner said. There may be other books out there, there may be better books out there. One of the things that our librarians do is as they add more books to their collection, they also take books out that maybe aren't being checked out, that maybe aren't being used. And this is a process that could happen. We may find that there's five better books out there. The librarians can make that decision and, and go through a process with that as well. The other piece is banning books. I truly believe when we pull books out of a library, we create more division in our community. Our community doesn't need more division right now. And banning books also says one person's thinking is better than another person's thinking. My vote will be to keep the book in the library. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll? I'm going to read the motion again. Yep, absolutely. "I move, following investigation on complaint M2021/22/02, that the book in question remains in our high school libraries." I need a second. I'm sorry. Brad, I'm sorry, thank you. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Mr. Bradbury?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Crick?
Yes.